Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to this annual meeting of the Borough Council. Please be seated. I'm required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public in the public gallery and those watching from home. Colleagues, it's with great sadness that I must acknowledge the death of councillor Bill Brady. Councillor Brady had been a councillor for three decades. He was first elected to the council in 1992 and was a much-liked and highly respected councillor in the Whiteleys Ward and on all council committees he sat on. He will be a huge miss particularly to those Ward colleagues, councillor Gibson and councillor Purvis. We send our deepest condolences to his family at this very difficult time. It is also with deep sorrow I am to advise you of the passing of former councillor Tom Piggott. Tom represented the Tyne Dock and Simon's Side area from 1999 until 2003 and then represented the Bitacall and All Saints Ward from 2007 to 2015. Can I ask all members who are able to do so to stand for one minute's silence, please? Thank you, colleagues. Please afford me a few moments to cover a number of housekeeping formalities. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through the doors behind them? And those sitting in the council chamber, please leave the room by the doors behind me and make your way to the forecourt at the front of the town hall. Staff will assist with this. May I please ask members, officers and members of the public to limit disturbances wherever possible? Please ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. This is to ensure everyone in the chamber can hear. Members will note that each desk is equipped with an individual microphone. Members must switch their microphones on when using it and off when they are not using it. And please press the mute button on the microphones if you're not speaking to reduce feedback and background noise when you're not speaking. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting? And we should always demonstrate respectful and courteous behaviour to one another. Members are also reminded that full council today will only deal with business that is set out on the summons as per the council's procedure rules. Members should indicate they wish to speak by physically raising their hand and being invited to do so by myself. Voting will be managed by the monitoring officer and strategy and democracy officers minuting this meeting. If an item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked if any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. In the situation where there is a descending voice, a vote will be taken. If an item requires a vote, the monitoring officer will either ask for a show of hands or will read out the name of each member in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote. We will record the outcome of any voting and announce it at this meeting. I have received apologies from the following councillors: councillor Dawes and councillor McHugh. Are any members or officers aware of any further apologies? Councillor Dean? She's here. Thank you. Item one on the agenda for this evening's meeting. The first item is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make any declarations before we move on to the next item of business? Colleagues are reminded that if you have a disclosurable prudery interest in any item which prevents you from participating in the debate and any vote, you will need to leave the chamber during that item. Once the item has been considered, an officer will come to get you to bring you back into the meeting. We now move on to item two. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 28th of February 2022. Are they accepted as a true record? Thank you, colleagues. Item three on your agenda for this evening's meeting is my announcements and communications. I would first like to welcome to the council councillors Brennan, Carter, Clare, Dawes, Paul Dean, Guy, Herbert, Lamont, McGowan, Catherine Maxwell and Robertson. Can I also take this opportunity to welcome back councillors Stephen Dean, Foreman, Kilgower, Leisk, Neil Maxwell, Porthouse, Proudlock and Strike. I very much look forward to working with you all. Usually, the annual meeting of the council would elect the mayor and deputy mayor for the new municipal year. Colleagues, you will recall that the mayor and deputy mayor of the borough were elected on the 18th of May 2021 for the municipal years 2021, 22, 22, 23. The role of mayor is a privilege and it is an honour to represent the borough in this civic capacity for another year. As the civic year for 2021, 2022 draws to a close, I wanted to update colleagues with some of the activities that have taken place over the last year. Despite the restrictions of the coronavirus pandemic, myself and my mayoress have enjoyed a busy year of key events and civic engagements during our first year in office representing and serving the people of South Tyneside. We have really enjoyed connecting with our communities and it has been a real honour to meet and use our roles to recognise and celebrate so many wonderful, kind-hearted people. The last 12 months have been incredibly rewarding. Early on, as restrictions lifted, we ensured that we were out visiting businesses and community groups. We have been lucky enough to have met hundreds of people who make South Tyneside a great place, including the recipients of Queen's Awards, OBEs, British Empire medals and welcome royalty to the borough. The Royal Highness, the Princess Royal, the Countess of Wessex, His Royal Highness, the Prince of Wales. We've been involved in the unveiling of special blue plaques honouring notable local people and have marked a number of key events in the calendar, including International Women's Day, Bangladeshian Independence Day, Show Racism the Red Card, but to name a few. They have been poignant and moving moments like Remembrance Days, Shrevennitsda, Anzac Day, Holocaust and Workers' Memorial Days, also important to pause and reflect. The 70th anniversary of our twin town links with Wuppertal and Holocaust Memorial Day were also marked with special online tributes. In between official openings and official engagements, then the mayoress and I have continued to fundraise for the mayors charities, supporting the Customs House and Cancer Connections, amongst other good causes. Charity evenings, curry nights, a Halloween-themed tour of the town hall, the Civic Bowl and much more, generously supported by local businesses and organisations. The money we raise for these organisations makes a huge difference to them. On behalf of South Tyneside, the mayoress and I have presented awards and given thanks to local people for their outstanding contributions to their local communities. As part of the hashtag Love South Tyneside Recognition Programme, where people are nominated for doing good in the community, I have written to those nominated and I am looking forward to meeting them in person for a celebration in the future. As we look ahead to the new municipal year, it's particularly exciting that the borough of South Tyneside has been selected to be part of the Queen's Platinum Jubilee Year and also in the lead-up to the Commonwealth Games baton relay. The role of mayor is a unique one that supports the promotion of our people, our place to the much wider audience. We have already joined tree planting activities for the Queen's Green Canopy Initiative and look forward to a series of special events, bringing communities together across South Tyneside, the UK, the Commonwealth to mark this historic celebration. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the people of the borough and our amazing businesses and organisations for their support, kindness and generosity during our time in office to date. I would also like to thank colleagues from political parties across the chamber for their ongoing support to the mayors charities. Thank you. Item four on the agenda for this evening's meeting. The next item of business is to consider the report of the head of paid service to review and update the council's constitution. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, Sam. There you go. Colleagues, this report sets out the annual review and proposed updates to the constitution for the municipal year 2022, 23. We know the importance of good and effective governance and the need to keep our council constitution under review. Having done so much work on the constitution for 2021, 22, the constitution committee has worked with the council's monitoring officer to ensure various in-year changes and revisions to the constitution have been presented and considered by full council throughout the year. Notwithstanding, the constitution's committees have embarked upon another detailed review of the constitution and have met regularly over the course of the past year as a politically balanced working group to share views, consider comments and feedback from members, officers and members of the public and have really worked through in detail how we can continue to develop and improve the constitutional arrangements for the council. This has also included a comprehensive look at motions submitted to full council that were referred to full council from council to constitution committee as the appropriate body, such as those relating to evening council meetings and public question time. The constitution committee is the guardian of the council's constitution and whilst members of the committee may not always agree, we all take this responsibility very seriously. It is having been through the robust exercise that I present this report to you today, colleagues. The report itself is very detailed, but I will pull just a few key areas for illustration which are set out in full between paragraphs 12 to 43 of the covering report. Article eight, scrutiny of decisions including updated wording to ensure it is properly documented that no members of the executive can provide a scrutiny function and to provide clarification that the performance panels included in article nine are performance scrutiny panels that may oversee scrutiny of discrete policy areas and are responsible for examining and analysing specific services or issues that fall within their specific portfolios as part of the council's overall scrutiny function. Article nine, the audit committee includes some significant additional wording to provide clarity of purpose and responsibility of audit committee in relation to the effectiveness of governance, risk management arrangements and the associated control environment. Article 11, community area forums, including significant additional wording set out in the CAF operating procedures. Having gathered feedback and information from across CAF operations this past year, the proposed amendments and inclusion of the operating procedures within the constitution seek to support a uniformed and transparent process of decision-making to support all CAF members. The council procedure rules have been amended specifically with regard to the voting practices of the mayor at meetings of Borough Council. To preserve the impartiality of the mayor, it is proposed that the mayor will no longer vote at meetings of Borough Council. Part E, codes and protocols, has been developed significantly over the past 18 months, all with the aim of providing greater support and information to elected members whilst promoting greater clarity and certainty as to procedures and process. This proposed that two additional protocols are added to part E to build this resource further. Colleagues, I would urge you to agree to the changes proposed and approve the updated constitution as provided for at appendix one. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Kilgower. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report or move an amendment? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An awful lot of work has been done on this review of the constitution. It was well overdue and I'd like to thank all the officers and members who were involved. I wanted to highlight one area of concern in relation to opposition motions being referred to the constitution committee from full council. For example, opposition motions for evening committee meetings, additional structures to the discretionary fund and for a public question time at full council. We have the briefest of mention of these motions in the final report. What I'm concerned with is that when opposition motions, or any motions for that matter, are deferred to the constitution committee from full council, they can disappear into a black hole, barely to be mentioned again. Motions that are tabled in full council should be decided in full council. By deferring motions, we are stripping away any level of openness, transparency and accountability that is available in full council. I have had questions from members of the public asking which members in the constitution committee voted down the mentioned motions, evening committee meetings, additional structures to discretionary fund, public question time. Many of our residents will never know the answer to this. The public won't know, but the public should know what their elected representatives are individually voting for and voting against. This level of transparency and accountability is available in full council. By deferring to the constitution committee, that is stripped away. Fundamentally, unless there are exceptional circumstances, motions tabled in full council should be decided in full council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Brennan, do you wish to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Until being elected just days ago, I had the perception that a recent opposition motion for public question time in the chamber was still to be decided by the constitution committee. I'm sure with the vast majority of the public watching tonight, they will be surprised in hearing that this motion was rejected in the constitution committee, amongst others. I have seen no transparency or accountability. No acceptable platform is available to the public detailing who voted for and against this motion and its fate. As a council, should we not be informing the public more about a motion's journey if it's deferred to a committee? I just can't understand why motions should be deferred so often. They can easily be debated and voted for at full council. Is that not what full council's for? Surely as a council, it's our duty to keep the public informed and abreast of what their elected representatives are doing, what they are voting for and what they are voting against. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You, councillor Brennan. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To repeat what Glenn said, to thank the officers and staff because this document in the last 18 months has just literally been a moving document, change and all that, which is all to the benefit of everybody and more so Nicola Robertson, all the graft she's done on it. There's only one thing that's caught my eye on it and it's the councillor exit strategy, the new section that's going in. And the only concern I've got what it is, the legal proceedings that I've been involved in, I've had to use documents that I obtained as a councillor and I used them after I came out as being a councillor. I think there should be a section that says only legal proceedings. I mean, of course, it can be bandied about, we understand that confidentiality, but for legal proceedings, I think there should be an option in there. Please.
Okay, thank you, councillor Robertson. Councillor Francis? Use the next one.
Yeah, that one seems to be working.
Just one second, councillor Brennan. Could you switch your microphone off, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to echo a lot of what councillor Thompson said. Obviously, this is a huge body of work, but vital body of work that the constitution committee does. And I recognise that takes a huge amount of time and effort on behalf of elected councillors, but also, of course, council staff and council officers. And I welcome many of the recommendations here. We've heard from the leader about the, you know, further clarity around the scrutiny function and around audit. And I welcome the stuff around, you know, procedure in CAF meetings, especially with regard to occasions where there are differences of opinion or a dissenting voice. Sadly, however, as councillor Thompson's already mentioned, there's been a number of occasions where motions to full council have been kicked into the long grass in effect and passed to the constitution committee to be discussed and in this case rejected behind closed doors, away from the eyes of other elected councillors and more importantly, the public. And we've heard what those proposals are, things like varying committee times to make meetings more accessible to the public and make it more easy for working people to consider becoming elected councillors and fulfilling these duties, allowing the public to hold the council to account in full council meetings by directly asking questions of the executive and of course additional scrutiny over how public money is used by the discretionary fund. None of these proposals has been adopted. And in reflecting on this, I'm reminded of Tony Benn's five questions for people in power. What power have you got? Where did you get it from? In whose interests do you exercise it? To whom are you accountable? And how do they get rid of you? So question three again, in whose interests do you exercise it? I'd argue that rejecting these proposals does not benefit the people of South Tyneside at all. It simply creates unnecessary obstacles for working people to engage with local democracy. It stops the public from directly holding the council to account and makes it harder to track the use of public money by the discretionary fund. So question four, to whom are you accountable? This should always be the public above political parties. And question five, how do they get rid of you? We already know this. We've seen it in action the last three local elections and I suspect we'll continue to see it while those in power are seen to make decisions that serve the party rather than the public that we're all here to represent.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Flynn? Excuse me, councillor Flynn?
Yeah, chair. I respect every elected member and I would only ask councillor Thompson to respect the members on the constitution committee. Nothing went into a black hole. We discussed every resolution and decided whether we were in favour or against. If you were the only one that voted in favour, then you can safely tell your constituents that everybody else voted against. We've gone through 2,300 pages of the constitution to end up with a constitution that we've got. When you refer to resolutions going from here to a black hole, it's normal practice, if you take a trade union, to pass it issues at a conference and then call a rules revision committee to say how it impacts. We have to take resolutions from here to the constitution committee just to see where the impact on the constitution. That will continue to be the case. If resolutions come that are acceptable, they'll be accepted by the constitution after a full debate. And you know as well as I know, we've had that full debate every time we've met.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really just want to add what councillor Thompson said. I mean, having been in this chamber for a year, I accept that some motions simply will have to be deferred to a later date. There may be matters of legal matters or issues that really don't have the time to have. But having said that, there have been motions put forward where I see no reason at all why they couldn't be decided in the chamber. And maybe that's a decision that comes from the chair, from yourself, and to give reasons to the public why it's been deferred. But there's been several motions that I've heard in here and I can see no real reason at all why they have to be deferred and they could be voted for on the night, which again would appease some of the public who are very dubious about the way this council works. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Foster. Councillor Robertson, you've already spoken. Would allow you to speak again?
On the back of what they're saying there about kicking the long grass and what have you, I understand what Wolf's just said, councillor Flynn's just said, et cetera. And there's only one that I would like us to be pushed to the front of the queue and that is with the change in South Tyneside Home Board that I'm noticing as well, hopefully it will assist. And that is the one about the bereavement, how long? And that is the one about the bereavement, how long people get free rent, you know, if that could be put to the front of the queue, which has been a year now that one, you know, from the two weeks to the four weeks, 30 days. I just ask that that's given urgent consideration, please.
That will be noted councillor Robertson. Councillor Johnson, do you want to come back?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously just listening and reflecting of comments from our colleagues, can I just say that on the 27th of April, a public meeting was held with regard to the constitution committee. This is the document that was presented to that public meeting. Unfortunately, there wasn't any members of the public there, there was one member of the press there. So councillor Thompson did have the opportunity at length to discuss in public his concerns with regard to the motions, but Madam Mayor, you know, with regard to councillor Francis's comment, what we do in this council chamber is for the residents and the businesses of this borough, councillor Francis, not for party purposes. And I do take that quite offensive by that comment. It is a personal opinion on your behalf, but I do take umbrage to that comment. We work for the residents and the businesses of this borough, Madam Mayor. I'm just asking council to endorse the amendments to the constitution, Madam Mayor.
Colleagues, for ease, the motion asks council to agree a number of recommendations, which I will read out in turn. Does council agree the changes proposed to the constitution and associated arrangements are set out in the report and reflected in appendix one? Thank you, colleagues. Does council approve the council's constitution as amended and attached at appendix one for the municipal year 2022/2023? Thank you, colleagues. Does council authorise the director of governance and corporate affairs, the monitoring officer, to finalise the arrangements as approved by full council and make further consequential or minor changes arising from the decision of full council as may be required? Thank you, colleagues. Does council agree to appoint Ms Roach to the West Shields and Cleeden and East Bolden CAF as the second voluntary sector representative for a fixed term of two years with the option of extending for a maximum of a further two years? Thank you, colleagues. We now move on to item five on your agendas. The next item of business is to consider a report of the independent remuneration panel and their review of members allowances for 2022/2023. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, this report is to advise council of the outcome of the review of the members allowance scheme by the independent remuneration panel. Council must agree a scheme of allowances for 2022/23 considering the views of the panel is set out in this report attaching appendix one, which includes details of the review undertaken by the panel and their recommendations on allowances and expenses to be paid to elected members. Colleagues, it is the council's legal obligation to have regard to the panel's recommendations. Whilst the council does not have a duty to follow the recommendations, we must have good justifiable reasons for departing from them. Colleagues, I would ask that we agree a scheme of allowances for 2022/23 and would urge all members to take into account the views of the independent remuneration panel when doing so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Foreman. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Foster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I got elected last year, I made a pledge not to take any increases during my time in office, so I will not personally take any financial reward from the additional gain. But again, for public record, what I've decided to do is the increase, whatever the difference is for now and receiving now, I will donate that plus more to local good causes and Cleeden East Bolden. But I just want for the public record, it's individual choices, I accept that. I'm just saying this is my personal choice, I hope it's respected. So just for public record, I will take the increase in basic allowance, but the basic, the difference, I will donate to local good causes and reward.
That's very commendable councillor Foster, thank you very much. Councillor Francis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome many of the recommendations in this report, the vast majority of them make perfect sense to me, you know, capping the number of special responsibility allowances and reducing the amount in some instances paid to committee vice chairs, an annual report on the hospitality spend coming to full council and greater clarity over expenses and telephone allowances and having a choice between a landline and a mobile phone, but not both. All of that stuff totally makes sense. But similar to councillor Foster there, as we know, we're all in the midst of a cost of living crisis or perhaps more accurately a low income or for some people a no income crisis. And therefore, under current circumstances, I'm not comfortable voting to increase the basic allowance despite agreeing with pretty much everything else that's in here. So just to make my own position clear.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do appreciate what my colleagues have said. And I want to speak to obviously what councillor Francis has just said in the recommendation one and the basic allowance. I think we've got to be mindful that we are way below where we should be and that is what the panel have said. Since 2012, in the last 10 years, the basic allowance for this council has increased by £420. Therefore, we've looked at our regional neighbours and we are far, far below any of them, some by an extremely large amount. However, a large increase would be needed to close that gap as quickly as the panel would want us to. The first step is to recommend the increase of £500 per annum per member and therefore I would like to recommend that we do take the recommendation one of the basic allowance because as the leader says, we've got to have extremely good reasons not to. And we have fallen way, way behind. We cannot afford to close that gap any quickly than we are doing now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is any more questions councillor Flynn?
Chair, it's more an observation and I appreciate we're kind of pick and choose, but as regards the overall HRAs, SRAs, sorry, being 50% of the councillors, I think that section, wait for it, should go to the constitution committee. The reason I'm saying that is I genuinely don't know how many SRAs we actually have. And I think we need to look at it because the consequence would be if we reduce, what do we reduce? So which ones go? Do we merge? Do we not merge? So I think that particular section, 3.15.1, should go to the constitution committee chair. The rest of the report I've got a problem with.
Thank you councillor Flynn. Councillor Atkinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really to, I suppose, further add to councillor Bell and councillor Flynn's points. I think whilst we might be reluctant to take any increase for ourselves and I totally get if someone wants to then desist from doing so and either choose to send it to charity or actually not even claim it in the first place, which I believe some members actually don't even take it. I think that's fine, but what we have to remember is that new members coming in, it may actually be a little bit of a disincentive. I don't think anybody comes in to be a councillor for the money because as it says in the report, there's an average of 25 hours a week worked by a councillor. And if you work it out on the new.
Councillor Thompson, please, when councillor Atkinson's speaking, would you not speak? Thank you.
And when you work it out on the new rate as was described, that's £6.80, I think, an hour, that's over 48 weeks. So I think it is really, let's remember that we do want to attract people to come to council, we want to attract diversity, we want to attract, you know, people who reflect the broader residents, you know, all kinds of people in our communities. And I think by holding that amount down, £500 is, you know, what the pollen recognise is a very small step to the £11,000 they want it to be at, but nevertheless, it is an increment. And following on from councillor Flynn's point, I think with regards to the constitution, the HRA, what members may know that there's already been some rationalisation of committees in terms of actually are they serving us the way that we used to believe they were? And actually, there has been some rationalisation and we want to continue with that and the constitution committee may well be the place that that conversation can be had. It may mean that some committees are subsumed into others with more frequency for some of them. And I think that is why I agree with the reference to the constitution committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. Are there any more questions councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know on numerous occasions in the three, four year I've been in the chamber, that's been mentioned about the money and what have you. It's all right, the councillor that's getting 20,000 a year saying that we're way below others, I will take the £500. I'm happy with what I get now with a single allowance. I'll take the £500 and I'll give it the local C here. Thank you.
That's very commendable councillor Robertson. Councillor Brennan, sorry, Milburn, sorry.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to conquer councillor Flynn's comments. I just think it needs looking at and it probably is the right place to look at it, the constitution committee and well, it's out of balance and it needs to be rationalised as has just been said. So I'd just like to conquer, I think you're right.
Thank you councillor Milburn. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Heatherington.
It was, sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor. Just on a point of information, on page 11 or page 17, whichever you want to look at it, at 3.3, there is a paragraph there that says that the panel understands that currently 36 SRAs are recognised, but currently only 24 are in payment. So I don't know if that really changes any of the views there. I don't have a problem with councillor Flynn's recommendation to send it to constitution committee, but it would just require clarification on that paragraph, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Heatherington. Councillor Flynn, did you want to ask another question?
Well, just an observation on that comment, I believe it's because some are shared, somebody holds more than one but only gets paid one payment. But we just really, as councillor Milburn says, we really need to look at what we're talking about and what we need to do with it.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Colleagues, for ease, the report of the independent remuneration panel makes a number of recommendations which I will take in turn. Recommendation one, does council agree that the basic allowance should be set at £8,167 in 2022/2023? Thank you, colleagues. And it should be subject to additional annual increases thereafter. Be updated annually on the. Is that agreed, sorry, that it should be additionally increased annually?
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Robertson.
Thank you. So what figure is it going to go up? There's no, what percentage is it going to go up? There's no mention of that. You're saying agreed it would, but not saying.
What was.
It's staying at 500 every year.
It'll be the annual increase and it'll be in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that all right? Thank you. Councillor Foster.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it was just the same every year annually, it'll be discussed, clarified and put forward. It hasn't been agreed now, I think that was.
There's no sum being agreed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does that clarify your question councillor Robertson? So is it agreed that the additional annual increase? Thank you. Be updated annually on the basis of any headline percentage increase agreed by the national joint council. Is that agreed? Thank you. Recommendation two, does council agree that the maximum number of SRAs payable does not exceed 50% of the council's members? Thank you, colleagues.
No, Madam Mayor, I think that was referred to the constitution committee on the recommendation of councillor Flynn, Madam Mayor.
Right, so can we make note that that will be referred to the constitution committee for consideration? Please, thank you. That the current SRAs are payable to members, sorry, payable to the lead leader, deputy leader, cabinet members, leader of the main opposition group, police and crime panel member, JTC Tyne and Wear subcommittee member and all committee chairs allowances should remain as they are for 2022/23 and they are kept under review. Thank you. That the vice chairs SRAs where payable should amount to no more than 50% of the SRA payable to the chair for the council committee, which the SRAs payable to the vice chairs of the overview and scrutiny committee, place select committee, people select committee, pensions committee, planning committee and licensing committee be reduced accordingly. Now, yeah, thank you. That the SRAs be updated annually on the basis of any headline percentage increase agreed by the national joint council. Recommendation three, independent membership be set at £816.70 in 2022/23, being 10% of the recommended basic allowance for 22/23 and that it continues to be set in line with any increases to the basic allowance. Thank you. Recommendation four, travel and subsistencies, telephone and overnight accommodation allowances, that the amount of subsistency allowance is in, sorry, the amount of subsistency allowance be increased with a maximum amount payable as shown in the table on page four of the report. Is that agreed? Thank you. That the gap between tea and dinner be closed, is that agreed? The first, sorry, the first class travel should never automatically be the right and should, sorry, the first class travel should never be an automatic right and should never be appropriate for a short journey and that there must be real justification as to why a councillor, excuse me, why a councillor believes they should travel first class, is that agreed? Yes councillor Robertson.
Thank you. In my opinion, there's no councillor that needs to travel first class. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Robertson. Rate of travelling allowances for private car to include electric and hybrid vehicles, is that agreed? Thank you. As many hotels do not adhere to star rating systems, that a reasonable limit is provided on the monetary spending for overnight accommodation for councillors, is that agreed? Thank you. That the telephone allowance be subsumed into the basic allowance, if not, that councillors have the freedom of choice between a landline. If not, that councillors have the freedom of choice between a landline or a mobile telephone, but that only one allowance in respect of telephone costs or calls is payable, is that agreed? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, councillor Keegan, I just couldn't see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We cannot agree to this at this time. We all serve the elderly and the vulnerable residents who may not feel comfortable calling a mobile phone. This could be for a number of reasons, including costs for them to call from their landline and a lack of confidence in mobile phone calls. Depending on the signal, there is occasionally a problem with the reception and a landline is more dependable in many cases for the elderly. We know the number of people in need of support to stay connected digitally is rising significantly in the wake of the cost of living crisis. We need to remain accessible to all our residents. Those who feel safe using and being contacted on landline, excuse me, and those who use mobile phones is a more convenient method of communication. We are here to serve and be available in any way we can. I think we should keep both mobile and landline for our residents.
Thank you, councillor Keegan. Does any other member wish to speak?
Councillor Atkinson? Again, just to add a little bit of texture, I think those of us, and many of us do have, don't we, quite an elderly population of residents where they do prefer to speak to a landline? And certainly I know if I ever ring some people not too far from me on her mobile, I can never get through because the house is terrible. So I think, you know, I think councillor Keegan makes a really good point in terms of reassurance to people who do prefer to call a landline and who actually want to know that.
Can I just ask colleagues then, is that unanimously not agreed? Right, can I just suggest then that we take a vote on this? Would you like to do it by show of hands or would you like a named vote? Right, we'll do it by show of hands. Those in favour that the telephone... I'm sorry, is somebody speaking? I was just going to ask for clarification, Madam Mayor, but it sounds like you're going to clarify. That the telephone allowance be subsumed into the basic allowance. If not, the councillors have the freedom of choice between a landline or a mobile telephone, but that only one allowance in respect of telephone costs or calls is payable. So are we in favour of just having one telephone? All those in favour of just having one telephone, please show their hands. All those in favour, would they like to raise their hands? Yes, of having both, sorry, I should have clarified that, councillor Walsh. Is anybody abstaining from the vote? Thank you, councillors. Recommendation five, sorry. Right, there was 10 people against, 38 in favour, and there was two abstentions, so it is carried. Thank you, colleagues. Recommendation five, hospitality and civic dignitaries allowance, that there be no change to the civic dignitaries allowance, is that agreed? That the hospitality budget for each financial year is agreed for the council, which may be accessed for civic and other hospitality spend, and that a policy and procedure be created, is that agreed? Thank you. That an annual report on hospitality spend is presented to full council, is that agreed? Recommendation six, that the members allowance scheme as agreed today will be implemented retrospectively from the 1st of April 2022. Is that agreed, councillor Kilgaw?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment to that in that the change will commence as of today. Please, Madam Mayor.
Are members in favour, rather than it be retrospectively from the 1st of April, that the change is implemented from today's meeting? Is everybody in agreement on that? Yeah, thank you very much, colleagues. That the panel be supported to review the members allowance scheme on a regular basis with at least an annual health check, is that agreed, colleagues? Thank you. We now move on to item six. The next, the next item of business is to consider report of the director of business and resources to appoint co-opted members to the audit committee. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report sets out proposals to appoint two new co-opted independent members to the audit committee. The director of business and resources in conjunction with the assurance and risk manager and director of governance and corporate affairs or monitoring officer assessed our arrangements for independent members against best practice for audit committees and concluded there was a need to refresh these rules. The previous co-opted independent members have served on the committee well. However, they were appointed in March 2006 when audit committee was first established and had served for 16 years when they left the committee in March this year. Recruitment exercises was conducted with two applications received. The candidates were interviewed by the director of business resources and the assurance and risk manager and are considered to be the necessary, sorry, are considered to have the necessary skills, experience and knowledge to fill the expectations placed upon co-opted independent members. In line with the constitution, the section 151 officer, director of business and resources, recommends council to appoint Dr Stuart Green as co-opted independent member to the audit committee with effect from the AGM in May 2022 for a fixed term of two years, ending at the council's AGM in May 2024, with the option of extending for a maximum of a further two years. To appoint Rashish Kotetsa, a co-opted independent member to the audit committee with effect from the AGM in May 2022 for a fixed term of two years, ending at the council's AGM in May 2024, with the option of extending for a maximum of a further two years, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Walsh. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of points on the appointment of these people. At page 28, and this is relating to Dr Stuart Green that's proposed to be appointed. At page 28, paragraph four, it says, must not have any personal, legal or contractual relationship with the council, including employees, members or former staff or any other relationship, which is the section I'm on about, other relationship or activity which may represent a conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest. Now, Dr Stuart Green was subcontracted to be the independent person for the standards committee hearings last year. So in theory, he's been a subcontractor of the council, he's had payments off the council. So there is a conflict of interest there. Yeah, so there's two points in the constitution relating to the appointment of independent persons. At page 63, the constitution, at 9.11, it says, the two co-opted members of the audit committee will serve a term of office of four years. The appointment of co-opted members is a matter reserved to full council on the recommendation of the Constitution Committee and the section 151 officer. Yeah, now going back to tonight's booklet at page 29 by the full council, it says in paragraph nine that they were interviewed by the director of business and resources and assurance and risk manager, and it came from that, but it doesn't say if it went to the Constitution Committee as it states in the constitution. Can you confirm, please, as well, there's a conflict of interest?
Just a moment, councillor Robertson, I'm just going to take some legal advice here.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dixon, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, when these appointments were suggested, councillor Robertson, we did ask if there was any links that would have any effect with the going to sitting on the audit committee. We are aware that obviously this gentleman was the council's independent person back in February 2021 and 2022, but we have been given assurances that there is no conflict, no perceived conflict of interest with this appointment on the audit committee, councillor Robertson. That is the information. We did ask if there was any conflicts whatsoever.
Thank you, just to come back to you, councillor Robertson, councillor Robertson. Just a moment. That, that is exactly the information I've just been given legally, that there's no conflict of interest from 2021, when he served.
Can I respond, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. As I said, page 28 of tonight's booklet, it, you know, it clearly says an individual cannot be a corporate independent member if they, so we've got it laid down here, but we're saying that it's okay to just do it. It says it cannot be, they cannot be appointed.
Just a moment.
If I go by the rules, I would don't, you know?
We always go by the rules, councillor Robertson, I can assure you of that. Just one moment.
And I'm just trying to assist, Madam Mayor, relating to the conflict of interest and what I've said about the 151 officer.
Okay, councillor Robertson, I'm just going to take some more legal advice and I will come back to you. I'm going to ask our monitoring officer, councillor Robertson, to respond to you because she probably could be more eloquently than what I can.
Not at all, Madam Mayor. Councillor Robertson, you'll be aware that Dr Green did step in as an independent person for us in February and March 21, and that relationship ended at that point. We since then appointed our own independent person in September 21, and we've been operating with that process in place since then. So the fact that it is have, you know, is there a real live now conflict of interest? Well, there isn't because he's no longer fulfilling that independent person role. And as to the comment around Constitution Committee, the leader and the deputy leader is chair and vice chair of the Constitution Committee have been fully involved throughout the process. Thank you.
Can I respond, please, Madam Mayor?
Yes, councillor Robertson?
So I get what the mountain officer has just said, but the two answers are just moving the goalposts again because the leader, what the mountain officer has just said, the leader etcetera and not the Constitution Committee.
Excuse me, councillor, I'm sorry, I don't comprehend there. The leader of the council is actually the chair of the Constitution Committee and the deputy leader also sits on the Constitution Committee, as I do as mayor. So it's gone, you know, it's been explained to you, so I don't know what you're not getting.
Final point, thank you, on that explanation, let me just give. Again, this is the latest constitution and it's clear what I'm saying. The two co-opted members of the audit committee will serve a term of office of four years. The appointment of the co-opted members is a matter reserved to full council on the recommendation of the Constitution Committee and the section 151 officer. It hasn't gone to the committee, it's gone to a couple of members. That's my point, thank you.
No, whatever is discussed at the Constitution Committee, councillor, I have to correct you there, comes to full council, and that's been proved tonight when we put all the recommendations before full council. Can we move on, please? Is the report agreed and do council agree that the appointment of Dr Stuart Green and Rajid Kotetsa as co-opted independent members of the audit committee? Thank you, colleagues. The report is agreed. We now move on to item seven on your agenda this evening. Before I move the membership of the committees of the council, I will ask the leader of the council to advise members of the composition and constitution of her cabinet. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As we all know, a leader is nothing without the right team. Over the last 12 months, the cabinetists have worked tirelessly to oversee a diverse range of decisions, from investment in facilities for children in need and services for older people in the end to environmental programmes and much, much more. I have worked with the cabinet to consider how we might better reflect the needs and aspirations of those who live, visit and invest in our borough. I have taken on board information from a range of sources, including local residents, an initial insight into our recent local government association, Corporate Peer Challenge. I have reflected on what our council and our borough needs to really focus on as we emerge from the coronavirus pandemic and support those most severely affected by the changing economy. I therefore want to reshape my cabinet to enable the delivery of services that are even much more in touch with our residents and what they want, and so that each lead member's portfolio makes real sense to our residents and our communities. I have therefore identified a number of changes to my cabinet team, who I know will be able to help me ensure that together we can really deliver for the people of South Tyneside. Madam Mayor, I can confirm, well, I'll put my teeth in, Madam Mayor, I can confirm that I have appointed colleagues to the following positions within cabinet. Councillor John Atkinson will continue as deputy leader and will continue to lead the slightly amended portfolio for culture, leisure and the visitor economy. Councillor Adam Ellison will continue in the role of lead member for children, young people and families. Councillor Anne Headrington will continue as lead member in the slightly changed portfolio of adults, health and independence. Councillor Joanne Bell will continue as lead member in the refocused portfolio of governance, finance and corporate services. Councillor Ernest Gibson will take a lead role within the lead member responsibility for transport and neighbourhoods. Councillor Jim Forman will act as lead member for housing and community safety. Councillor Ruth Barclay will join my cabinet as lead member for the voluntary sector partnerships and equalities. And councillor Margaret Melling will take up the position of lead member for economic growth, skills and climate change. After some careful consideration, councillor Mark Walsh has decided to step away from cabinet to accommodate other responsibilities, and I am so thankful for his time and support as a cabinet member. Thank you, councillor Walsh. I have great faith in the team of councillors who make up the cabinet, who have the experience, the knowledge and the passion to lead this council and to deliver for our residents and for our businesses. Madam Mayor, these changes to the cabinet will need to be reflected in the constitution to ensure accountability and transparency, and I will ask the director of governance and corporate affairs to make the necessary changes. Finally, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to update colleagues that this year I intend to appoint a number of member champions, who are elected members who will act as an advocate for specific, I'll put my teeth in again, for specific areas of council business. The main responsibility of each member champion is to encourage communication and positive action over the issue they represent. They are as follows. Youth engagement will be councillor Jay Potts. Equality, inclusion and diversity is councillor Jean Carter. Equality, inclusion and diversity is councillor Jean Carter. Skills is councillor Michael Player. Domestic violence is councillor Ruth Barclay. Democracy councillor Anne Best. And South Shields Town Centre and Market Traders councillor Mark Walsh. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. The next item of business is item eight on your agendas, is to consider the membership of the committees of the council for 2022-23 as is indicated in the printed list circulated to members on gold papers, which meets political balance requirements. I will ask councillor Kilgower to move the appointments. Councillor Kilgower?
Thank you, Madam May. I think you've read that for me very kindly. Thank you. I move that the membership of committees for 2022-23 be as indicated in the gold papers circulated to members this afternoon, which meets the political balance requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Bell. Are there any alternative nominations?
No.
Are those appointed as set out on the gold papers agreed? The appointments are agreed. Thank you, colleagues. We now move on to item nine on your summits. The next business is the appointment of chairs and vice chairs of the committees as listed in the green papers. I will ask councillor Kilgower to move the appointments. Councillor Kilgower?
Thank you, Madam May. I move that the chairman and vice chairman or chairpersons of committees for 2022-23 be as indicated in the green paper circulated to members this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Bell. Are there any alternative nominations? Are those appointed as set out on the green papers agreed? The appointments are agreed. Thank you, colleagues. We now move on to item ten. The next business is to appoint the representatives to serve on outside bodies for 22-23 as set out in the yellow papers. I will ask councillor Kilgower to move the motion. Councillor Kilgower?
Thank you again, Madam May. I move that the appointment of representatives be as indicated in the yellow paper circulated to members this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Bell. Are there any alternative nominations? Yes, councillor Huntley?
Thank you. There's an error on page two, the North East Combined Authority Audit and Standards Committee. It gives myself as the person representing, and councillor Dawes is substituted. It actually should be the opposite way around. Councillor Dawes should be the person.
Right, so it's a typo error. Thanks. Thanks for pointing that out, councillor Huntley. Are those appointments set out on the yellow papers agreed? Thank you. The appointments are agreed. We now move on to item eleven. The next business is to agree the programme of ordinary meetings as indicated on the blue papers. Councillor Kilgower?
Thank you, Madam May. I move that the meetings of the council and committees as indicated on the programme of ordinary meetings circulated to members this afternoon on the blue papers be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Bell. Does any member wish to speak on the matter or propose an amendment? Councillor Robertson?
Madam May, on the previous point, I don't know if they're going to come to it or I missed it. Where's the chairs of South Tyneside Homes in Centoria and Housing Ventures? Unless you're coming to it, I apologize.
Just to point out to you, councillor Robinson, the people that go on to South Tyneside Homes are appointed by the council, but the chairs are appointed by that organisation, not by the council.
Is that for the three housing companies, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does any member, does any other member wish to speak on any amendments? Okay, the programme of meetings is agreed. Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, that concludes the business of the council today. Can I thank everyone for their attendance this evening? And for those people in the public gallery, thank you for attending also. Take care, everyone. Have a safe journey home.